I get the thing, and I get the thing, that's okay. We get to talk. Most people don't. Or if you don't know. You gotta prove it. So.
Hey, Jess. How is that? Who's your... We'll pick him up.
Is that your life I'm gonna risk?
I don't think it is.
Then there was another guy, and I remember. He had a... Living in Hashem beyond...
Are you there for this?
In the last position. And that really stood out because she was in her place that we threatened to send.
No, we're just scared to say hello.
Was the... She was too... And that's it. No. It was... You know, I say that's two seasons before the July of... Okay. Chief, how are you doing?
So you can see we're not money...
It was the first...
Just... Just... I have...
That's like... I read that story. I don't know.
Wow! So do you want me to...
Why is he wearing that?
I don't know. I just find it... So they expect the...
This is the first?
It was fun.
Morning.
Still trying to figure out.
I mean, if you want to...
It was like... You know, a question. Take care.
Oh!
Sorry, this lecture. Morning. Don't worry. I was going to get this to you, sorry. Thanks so much.
Well, yeah, that's why I knew that.
My apologies. Wish we didn't have to. She's gonna hide back there?
Thanks. Take the bed.
But I do.
Sleep tight.
Huh? I haven't sat up there in three years. I'll come sit higher. And I'm close. Yes.
Jason?
Yes. Thank you, Jess. That's...
Members of... Let go on... Born and your...
Just another person in the woman.
Right.
Trying to keep the... I was just thinking that Lawrence and the same thing.
You're putting up a... You might stay. Good.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. We, everyone, ask you please rise for your prayer, Pledge of Legions, before we convene our Commissioners' Public Meeting. Dear gracious and almighty God, we thank you for the state you've granted us as tomorrow is never promised. Help us to share a meaningful discussion that will make our communities to grow closer and prosper. Phil is full of your grace as we make decisions that will affect our constituents. May our decisions please you, Father, be full of your wisdom. Lord, next week we'll recognize the 30th, the 33rd anniversary of the American Disabilities Act. May we always take time to see how we can help and assist those with disabilities. We thank you for their lives and talents that they share with mankind. We lift up those that work with individuals with diverse abilities. We ask you to give them strength, compassion, understanding, and guidance. Father, we pray for active military and veterans each and every day. Next week we'll be remembering the 70th anniversary to the end of the Korean War. We remember the approximately 40,000 American soldiers who paid the ultimate sacrifice and 100,000 that were wounded. We thank you for those veterans that did make it home safely. We ask you that you continue to meet their needs. Lord, this week we celebrate National Probation and Prole Week. Thank you for the men and women on the front and back ends of the criminal justice system. The population at our parole agents encounter have made some poor decisions in the direction. May those lives are steered in a positive direction through interaction with these officers, and we pray for their safety and ask you to provide them guidance and wisdom as they work with the freedoms of their clients. May the ones that they need guidance reach out and value the help and assistance that is offered. We thank you for those professionals that are called in life to help those in need. They see the good in people and the value in a life. Pray that you wrap your arms around our military and law enforcement, your protection daily, provide them and their families a sense of calmness and peace as they serve our nation and communities. And we ask for your watchful eye over our meeting and shower us with your grace. Amen.
Pledge of Legions. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God in the temple of liberty and justice for all.
To the rising light, remember you now have been connected or is no longer in further...
Push our business. Morning. Morning. Okay, at this time we'll convene a Commissioners' Public Meeting and ask for approval in the minutes of the previous meetings.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. And we'll move on to public comment on agenda items only at this time. Hearing none? Any online?
None.
Okay, and move on to bid open means. Krista. Morning.
This is for the RFP, for the Total Compensation Study. We have seven bidders or proposals. Integrity Personnel Incorporated for $215,000. Gallagher Benefit Services Incorporated for $275,000. Evergreen Solutions LLC for $73,500. McGrath Human Resources Group, $105,729. Bolton, $66,000. RKL Virtual Management Solutions, $101,500. And the Archer Company for $27,500.
Okay, thank you.
It's a range.
Yeah.
Probably what happened, there's, so there's multiple things you can do. So the way that the system works in Penn babe, you can't always do individualize. So I bet you like the $27,000, you probably picked a portion of the work and not all of it.
Right.
That's what I'm assuming. We'll take a look at that.
Okay, right. Great, thank you. And because it's services, you don't actually have to bid it out, but we did it as a good government practice.
We'd say that would be...
Right? Good government practice.
Okay.
All right, moving on to reports. Kamlyn, payable cash requirements.
Morning, Kamlyn.
Good morning, Commissioners. Presented for your ratification, our invoice is due through July 26, 2023, to be paid on July 19, 2023, in the amount of $2,201,524. The breakdown is as follows, with 25.74% being funded by the general fund at $566,628.58. 4.78% is being funded by grants and other sources at $105,133.45. 17.99% is being funded by RMS at $396,023.35. And 51.50% is being funded by escrow at $11,133,738.62.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So just to highlight for the public, some of the large ones. Energy power investment, that is RMS, right? That's $183,000, almost $184,000. And then the visitors bureau hotel tax payment to the chamber, $154,500 or so. It's kind of small print, isn't it? Or is it my eyes?
It's very small print.
Okay. All right, those are some of the biggest ones.
Can you explain the escrow for the public? What category is that?
That's a good point. So over $1 million in escrow.
I would assume it's money that we've held for something and now we're paying it out.
Yes.
Yeah. But specifically, I think the Commissioner was asking, what are some of the examples?
Oh, I'm sorry, for what's going out with escrow?
Yeah.
Okay.
For escrow.
Um, we have a lot of stuff going out to Commonwealth of PA, and those are various things through RMS. There's no more details than that one. We have quite a few are actually going out for the field closures at the landfill.
And then...
Right.
Quite a few, actually. Okay.
Yeah. The field closure, Mr. York, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And so that's money that's been set aside by each load that comes into the landfill over the years, and it's now being used to properly close the landfill.
Sections of the landfill.
Sections of the landfill. Yeah. Right. Okay.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none on fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried.
Next, I have presented for ratification, jury panel number 16, due for payment on July 19, for $4,148.60, and this is funded 100% through the general fund.
Motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
This is also something that we're doing so that we're paying the jurors.
Excuse me, I can't hear you. That we're paying...
We've had an issue in the past not getting payment to the jurors in a timely fashion, and it seems to me that we're putting these special runs out to get the money on purpose.
And we thank all these people who did their duty to do jury duty. It's really important, really important, because it's the backbone of our, of our court system. And a right that we shouldn't forget, right, that we have, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Information is... Maya?
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning, Matt.
Morning.
There's two proposals we were requesting for the planning commission, I guess, planning and community development. One is the Brown Farm Fish Habitat Design Project. That is a stream bank stabilization and fish habitat improvement project, and that is located at Laurel Run, which is the tributary of Little Muncie Creek. And then the other one is Spring Garden Hunting Club Fish Habitat Design Project. Again, same type of project, but this one's located in Buttonwood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Personal actions. Jessica.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Director.
Morning.
Seeking your approval on the following personnel actions as conditional offers of employment subject to the successful completion of background checks and other employment conditions. For information technology, Ronald Weaver, technology specialist, full-time replacement, hired at $22.39 per hour, anticipated to start on July 24, 2023. For the prison, Robert Paul Hamus, CO1, full-time replacement, hired at $20 per hour, anticipated to start on July 30. Also for the prison, Kevin Rossman, CO1, part-time, this is a new position, hired at $20 per hour, anticipated to start October 22, 2023. I see a typo here. It says 80 hours per pay period. This is a part-time position, so that should be corrected to say no more than 1,000 hours per year.
Did you miss the agreement?
I was gonna do that last. And then lastly, for the prison, Zachary Baylor, CO1, full-time replacement, hired at $20 per hour, anticipated to start on July 30, 2023. And then also ratifying an agreement with employee 0712.
Okay, can I motion?
I'll move to approve.
Any comments or questions? Kamlyn, fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
So carried, thank you.
All right, moving on to action items. Kristin, 6.1 through 6.4.
Morning, Commissioner.
Morning.
First, I, and this is to approve the subjectivity and recent amendments for the WIS for municipal water. Sorry, this is to, and I want to take this with 6.2 together to explain it. They have received, the WIS for municipal water authority has received $250,000 in ARPA funds, and the sanitary authority have received $250,000 in ARPA funds. And they have requested to reallocate that total $500,000 between the two authorities in a different way. So that is what these amendments reflect. The first amendment is to increase the amount of their grant for the municipal water authority from $250,000 to $400,000. And that project was changed from the Brook Street Pressuring and Val Relocation Project to WMWA Water Neighbor Repair. And then 6.2 is for the sanitary authority, which is to increase their amount from $250,000 to $100,000. And the West Plant Filter Press Replacing Project is a move to pay for them. So they still have their other projects. The total amount has not changed.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion to accept action item 6.1, 6.2.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All fair side?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
So carried. Thank you.
6.3, continuing the ARPA award for the nonprofit grant, which is for nonprofits that knock revenue during the pandemic. And this is an award in the amount of $12,990 to the Garrett Conference Post One American Movement.
Okay. I have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I will second that.
Any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Okay. Kristin, go ahead.
And 6.4 is another ARPA award presented to the Water and Sewer Grant, which is to the Boyd Town Borough Conference Avenue Utility Line Replacement, which is in the amount $80,000.
Okay, got a motion?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments? All fair side?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so carried. Thank you, Kristin. Yep, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 6.5. Commissioner seeking your approval for the Agreement of Sale with Pennsylvania College of Technology. This agreement is between the county and Penn College for three parcels, one on Bridge Station Road, one on Third Street, and the one on One Drive. And I believe, Pat, do you want to make any comments?
Thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely. Morning, Pat.
Good morning. Good morning, how are you? Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Just to give a little background, back in October 2020, the Penn College Board of Directors authorized the college administration to sell a 425-acre rich-top property in Nippenos Township, which is known as Morgan Valley. Been used for special events in a retreat center for years, but that use had declined. A portion of that sales proceeds were directed to student scholarship assistance. That property is now in the county tax office. It's one example of how, over the past few years, the Penn College administration and board of directors have been deliberate in divesting of underutilized properties, properties that have a higher and better use like those three today. And instead, we have focused on blight elimination within the institutional zone on the west side of the Market Street corridor in Williamsport. There, we are partnered with the county and with the city on a number of projects, including the expansion of Riverwalk on the southern border of campus in Williamsport. These and other private, public-private partnership activities support the robust redevelopment of the key gateway at Maynard Street, and they directly align with the proposed brown field revitalization at the entry point of the city, along Interstate 180, the Williamsport Lumber Yards Youth Baseball and Softball Complex. Today, we finalize an agreement that includes three large parcels, as Matt mentioned, 1359 West Third Street in Williamsport, which had largely functioned as an underutilized parking lot. It was built to meet the onerous parking requirements of the college that the city had at the time, with long overdue amendments to the parking ordinance under the Slaughter Administration. That lot is no longer needed by the college. The reconfiguration expansion of county recycling and transfer station operations will benefit the city as well and will improve traffic safety on West Third Street. Bridge Station Road in Brady Township is an important puzzle piece that will offer the county the ability to free up federal encumbrances at nearby highly developable properties, ultimately adding to the county municipal tax base as well. The county will convey us, I'm sorry, the college will convey a 64-acre parcel of wooded land, which is largely, largely used as instructional area for forestry and landscape students to do plan identification. That parcel is just south of our 110-acre parcel that we use for heavy equipment training site, which we will retain. Naturally, the curricular plan identification activities can continue as this would be public land. The remaining 10 acres represent the ground underneath the railroad right-of-way along the Susquehanna River on the eastern edge of our training site, but safely far enough away from the instructional area for future use as a rail trail extension, which is another great public use. And then 3314, Waugh Drive in Williamsport, which was constructed originally as a state emissions program, those later have been abandoned by the Commonwealth, as there are several in the county like that. We have used it as an advanced automotive lab, but is underutilized, and considering the operational costs, the curriculum has now been folded into our existing automotive programs based on main campus. The 8,000-square-foot building is a high bay metal structure on two acres. You know, knowing that Coroner Kiesling and his staff have been in dire need of a new facility, our administration thought this might be an appropriate building and the location to meet many of the stated needs, and we had approached originally the county with that in mind. We're pleased that this agreement includes a commitment by the county to extend public water to our stability earth science center on Allenwood Camp Lane, where our popular diesel heavy highway, I'm sorry, heavy equipment, power gen, landscape, and horticulture and forestry programs are taught in world-class industry-supported labs. That will be the site of the next spring's Baha SAE competition, which is an international event. We're very excited about this, sponsored by the Society of Automotive Engineers. Will feature more than 80 collegiate teams who've designed, fabricated, tested, and raced their vehicles on Enduro Track. We again thank the county for their partnership and the planning, this exciting event for the county, or for the community, which will bring in nearly 1,000 competitors, along with sponsors, officials, and spectators. We also appreciate the partnership and support by county officials to underwrite the purchase of two new Penn College police vehicles. As you know, our ACT 120 certified officers complement other state and local law enforcement through mutual aid agreements, and like their colleagues in other departments, they've engaged in some harrowing duties. Our new captain, Dave Platts, earned the Silver Star for bravery last year while engaging a suspect, and he and now retired Captain Chris Miller made the arrest that led to the convictions for multiple charges, including homicide. Last week, we were able to announce the college received another $2 million grant from the U.S. Economic Development Administration to attract and upscale current and future workforce to meet the increasing demands for clean energy, architecture, construction, and concrete science professionals. Initiatives include constructing an 1,800-square-foot clean energy center house on formerly blighted properties within the institutional zone, which will train home energy professionals with in-demand skills and certifications, and will also update the Carl Building Technology Center and its instructional labs to improve learning experiences for students in programs related to building, construction, service, and maintenance. In earning that grant, we are pleased to enjoy bipartisan and bicameral support from U.S. Senators Casey and Bettman and Congressman Meuser. Some other quick points about the college and where we stand today, because I know it's often asked. We do maintain a greater than 96% placement rate for graduates with 100% in many programs. Georgetown University's 2022 Is College Worth It study named Penn College the best four-year public in the state when evaluating 10- and 15-year ROI, return on investment. We have industry partnerships with over 3,000 Pennsylvania businesses as of today. 5,000 incumbent workers and apprentices were trained last year through our robust workforce development division, and the college now predicts double-digit enrollment percentage increases. That's an increase of several hundred full-time students for fall 2023, with some 45 of our in-demand programs, including welding, electrical, aviation maintenance, that are currently beyond capacity and on wait lists. And our board of directors voted in June to hold tuition flat for 2023, 24. Now, bear in mind that while we are affiliated with the university, Penn College is not supported financially by Penn State, and we are reliant upon the Commonwealth for our appropriation, which represents less than 25% of our budget. So even with the 7.1% increase that was proposed in House Bill 612 and House Bill 1456, and despite our remarkable enrollment growth this fall, it still leaves us in a deficit position as we work through two smaller junior and senior classes due to the pandemic. Penn College is an expensive endeavor, and, but because of the low per-student funding by the state, low and middle-income families have significant challenges accessing our life-changing educational programs that we offer in essential professions like welding and CNC machining, polymer engineering, nursing and physician assistant, cybersecurity, building automation, aviation maintenance, power generation, and construction management. Penn College's proven model most effectively prepares future workforce leaders, but the paradox is that there is an affordability problem for the very students, traditional age and reskilling students alike, whose society needs to fill these roles. We ask for your support in seeking fair funding from our legislators and our governor, and we thank you for our long and fruitful partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. Kate, would you like to say anything on behalf of the Coroner's Office?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So Chuck couldn't be here today, but I'm sure he's watching in. So I just want to thank the Commissioners for finally securing a building for us. We're optimistic that hopefully some of our challenges will be a little less as we move forward with this project. I'm sure you guys have received emails. Our morgue is, has been at capacity, so it's been a struggle the last couple of weeks, especially, and we're in a battleground between hospital patients and between our clientele and the morgue. So we look forward to seeing the end. There's a little bit of a light in the tunnel now, it feels like, finally, so thank you for that.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
You know...
Go ahead, you say. You go ahead.
I just, I appreciate, and I'm glad we could come up with...
It's been a long time coming.
But I want to say thank you to Penn College and to the other nonprofits that always work, and it's a collaborative effort to, to help solve issues of county government. Okay? Whether it's Penn College, Lake County College, or UPMC, okay? Whenever we have an issue, we bring these organizations together, and, you know, it works. And we can't thank you enough for that cooperation. It's solved the Coroner's problem. It's going to add, you know, with Penn College alone, it's going to add a number of housing units on the golf course, which otherwise wouldn't have happened if we didn't come up with this agreement. Reducing, hopefully that's our plan, bring more people in our community, build more homes, and at least stabilize taxation. That's how we do it. And without the cooperation of those, and many other entities, but, you know, we can always seem to count on you. I do want to ask you a question. When we're competing in, what is this, the Baha? Have we won this?
Yes.
How many times?
Well, we've had two top 10 finishes, and our students have won the Enduro.
Could you briefly explain to the public, and I know, Jason, you're involved with this?
Love it, yep.
So the students, the Society of Automotive Engineers, which is an international body, came up with the concept of this, where students at engineering and engineering technology students design and build. It's a, it's a go-kart. This year, it's the first year it's a four-wheel-drive vehicle from scratch. I think the only items on our car are the shocks and the tires that are not made by the students. They're fabricated in our CNC labs or in our plastics and polymer labs. That's not the case with some of those other competitors. But we're talking about University of Michigan, Texas A&amp;M, large land-grant schools with incredible budgets next, in Michigan's case, next to the automotive industry that we're, that our students are routinely defeating in the competition. So the competition is a lot of different factors. It's engineering, it's, it's pricing strategy. There, there, it's a truly a, uh, it crosses a lot of different programs. There's graphic design, there's all kinds of different aspects to it. And then the actual race, which is kind of the exciting part that spectators want to see, it's as many laps as you can make before the vehicle breaks down. And it's over a pretty arduous course. So the chances of that happening, if you have an engineer to vehicle, right, snapping the frame or, or your engine just stalling out and not being able to withstand the conditions are, are pretty large. I mean, think of these races across the continent of Africa or something like that on a small scale. Our students have won the Enduro race. You want to have a, the kind of the lightest student as possible to drive the vehicle to reduce weight. So they consider all those kind of things. But we've won, and we've had two top-10 finishes against schools of that caliber. There are schools from India, schools from the UK, from Canada as well. That's why it's an international competition. I think Latin America, too.
We'll be hosting this next May.
We're hosting it next May.
It's estimated to bring over $1 million into the economy.
You say so. I have got the back-of-the-envelope figures, but if that's what they're considering, I would imagine so. I mean, if you consider what Little League brings, kind of scale it down, but with the same amount of people coming from those same places, yeah, absolutely. We're very excited about it. And the Chamber has been a great partner as well. And obviously, we'll be partnering with some of our sister chambers down to the south of us, because there won't be enough hotel rooms, you know, and, and things like that in Williamsport and Loyalty Stock and Motorsville.
I want to touch base on another comment that you made. And you talk about, you know, education is, is a huge investment.
It's expensive endeavor, yes.
Right. And you, and you need to look at it now as a return on your investment. And so you said number one in the state on the return in investment.
After 10 years and after 15 years, both, two separate categories.
And I think that's so critical, that people understand that Penn College, I, I have a friend who has a son that went to Penn College, Diesel in Kansas, right? Here's a kid that just in seven months now has a job that's paying unbelievable money, and he's, and he's still learning, right? And they just offered him a full-time job, and he's going to be making over $80,000 a year. Okay? This college offers so many different, you know, studies that it's, it's incredible what you do, what a college does, and, and how they, they place people in the force.
Well, and, and I'm happy to say that's, that's a common story, not an uncommon one of your friend's son. It's, you know, these are essential professions. Industry supports our programs. They, they help with the curriculum, the program, the school, and the institutional level. They advise on that. If they say, "Stop making buggy whips," we stop teaching buggy whip making. It's a college in America. It's not an overnight thing. There's accreditation, things like that. But we turn the battleship about as fast as anybody, we think, in terms of being responsive to industry. And the industry appreciates that and rewards us with a lot of amazing equipment in our labs that we would not be able to afford otherwise on, on even if the state were to fund us fairly, which they do not. It's, it's, we're, we're very proud of the place, and thank you for, for your story about it. I mean, we talked about essential professions, and when everything got shut down, and we said, "Essential workers only," every one of our alumni should have been working the next day.
Pat, while you're up here, I want to thank, please thank your board of directors for working with us. You've helped us solve three, three problems. You know, you mentioned them, the expansion of the transfer station, which will get the traffic off of Third Street, especially on Saturdays, which has been a traffic hazard.
It's a Dunkin' Donuts situation.
Exactly. And we have a township supervisor that helps solve that, that crisis. And we're glad that's solved, too. The, the land conversion with the golf course, you know, what we found out, how it was tied to federal monies from 1978. And now we can move forward with, with housing and selling off sections of the, you know, the golf course, the part of three of those areas, and now bring additional housing. And then lastly, the Coroner's Office, which has been an ongoing issue for a decade. You know, we'll be ecstatic when we can, we can break ground up there and, and have the Coroner finally be a place where you can call home.
And say, our faculties, and to your last point, our faculty, students, staff, that we live here, too, and it's important to us that, that, that office be able to, to do its important job for our community. And that was a big consideration for the board, certainly. And, and as for the, the land swap, your, your county planning staff was super creative in coming up with that solution, and a lot of credit goes to them. It was a great collaboration and a nice teamwork, which we continue to have with that great team.
And thank God we found out about it, because down in Ready, they didn't, they put up a $10 million building, didn't have land to convert, and had to go out and buy land to convert. It was, it was a real mess down there, which Shannon came from that county and, and, you know, educated us on what happened down there. So thank you for, you know, you are a gem in our backyard, and we're so thankful that you're here to educate these students on higher learning. My daughter-in-law is a graduate of the nursing program, and it's a great institution, so thank you.
Thank you all, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
You know, Pat, don't go yet. I, I want to personally thank you, because you personally, I know you're very modest, but in the eight years that I've been here, the last three where you've been engaged on these projects, and I know you don't like to, to hear that, but you deserve some public recognition for that. Because those three endeavors that my colleagues described are critical to this county in many ways. And, and of course, you know, you highlighted that, what the public doesn't realize is that Penn College adds, I think probably at least 15 police officers to the community. And they, under the, under the state statute, they're empowered to do things, which really helps us in a, in a part of the community where we need, need that help. And we saw what happened on, on VINEAP with the officer who was, who was shot at. And, and under Chris Miller and under both President, our former President David J. Gilmore and President Mike Reed, it's been an important asset in repopulating the county. And, and this event, the Baja event, is another way for people to come here, to see the county, to say, "Jeez, maybe I'd like to come and live here." It's a way for our kids to say, "Maybe we want to stay here and work here." So, but you, you personally have done a great job on it. And, and like I said, I know you don't like to hear that, but we appreciate it. We want you to know that. And as Commissioner Metzer said, we hope that you'll extend our thanks to your board for working with us. And especially with you on this last one with the Coroner, because I remember when you came in to us and you said, "Hey, guys, I got an idea." And for the Coroner's building out there in the, in the automotive, and it, and it, it's, it's going to work. And we're going to put the resources in to make it a building that people, whether they're living or deceased, can be proud of. So thank you, Pat.
Thank you for that. I will pass on to the board, and it's always a pleasure to work with, with Matt and his team, and he's so supportive of the college in ways you guys may not even know. So thank you very much for that as well.
And we're very thankful that, how involved you are in the community. You know, from the Flag Day march to Little League to, you know, the, the kids embrace the community. And we.
Feature students.
That's right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You're welcome. Take care.
Jenny, can I have a motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On whose side?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, 6.6 through 6.8, Mayan.
Morning again. The first item I have for you, 6.6, is to approve the 2023-2024 Medical Assistance Transportation Program. This is our participation grant agreement, as well as our assurance of compliance. No formalization on the total allocation is done until they review the prior years, and it's all based off of performance and need. I know Dan's here from STEP. He was probably going to talk about statistics on what they've done for the MAT program for this past fiscal year.
Where are you, Dan?
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. We're asking the Commissioners to approve the Medical Assistance Transportation Grant for 2324, which STEP has been operating for many years. This provides much-needed transportation assistance for individuals on medical assistance, whether it be through the shared ride program, through mileage reimbursement, or through bus passes purchased through River Valley Transportation to get to much-needed medical appointments, you know, throughout our region and in some extreme cases outside the area. Last year, we performed over approximately 37,000 trips between three trip venues and served over 1,100 individuals, residents of Lightcoming County. So it is a busy program, and we ask that you continue to, we appreciate your support. In the past, and we ask that you approve this continued operation.
Okay, thank you. A motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any comments or questions? So, go ahead.
Arena Black.
Arena Black. As a whole, right now, we're still recovering from the pandemic.
Okay, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's been difficult. And we're looking at things, working with PennDOT on the shared ride side to try to make sure that we can get back to a, you know, revenue-neutral situation. And that's very common throughout the state of Pennsylvania.
But several years ago, you, you were in the red and you found ways to break that barrier, because it was difficult. And the state did step up and give you more allocated funds. You have more funds.
And, and they have done that through the pandemic, and they're working with us on ways to make sure it doesn't.
All right. So, so I'm not sure if we can assist or set up some meetings with our legislators to talk about it, if you think there is a need.
Well, I mean, we may have some ideas. PennDOT's been very proactive. And it's, you know, sometimes when you deal with state organizations, you get different levels of cooperation. They've been very cooperative. And as you may know, they're, they've helped, and they've funded the, more or less, entire purchase, but we're going to have a new transportation garage to house our vehicles, because we had vehicles in the past that fell prey to the catalytic conversion theft craze. At one point, we've had, we had up to about 18 vehicles that were, that fell victim to that. And we've done some things in the meantime. But PennDOT's very concerned about facilities, so they, they have provided funding for us to do that, so it's not coming out of our, our program. So I can say PennDOT's been very, very supportive. They've had meetings with us, they've stepped to the, stepped to the plate. And they're going to work with us. We may somewhere down the line need, you know, to do, do some type of fair increase, but we haven't had it for 10 years, which is unheard of in transportation.
So coincidentally, first of all, I appreciate all you do, and we all do what, what STEP does. Coincidentally, I did have a constituent contact me yesterday with some concerns about how can they talk to someone about issues with drivers? Or, or as they described it, and I don't know what happened, and the only reason I'm bringing it up now is because you're here. And so is there a mechanism for people, if they have an interaction with a driver that they don't think is, you know?
Well, they can, they can call in and, and they can talk to me.
Okay.
I would direct them, direct them to my, my phone number, which is 601-9675.
601.
9675.
9675. I really appreciate you.
And we, because every, every question, every concern we get from, from the general public, we do move on fairly quickly. You know, sometimes early, late, a lot of times we have complaints that might not even involve our vehicles. It might involve another white vehicle. We, I've had calls from people saying, "Well, there was a STEP vehicle." It turned out not to be a STEP vehicle, because it was a white, white vehicle. People associate that, and that's fine.
That's great, yeah.
But we will, we follow up immediately with things like that.
Appreciate that very much, because I've, I have a feeling the constituent may be watching today. So it's great that they know there's a way that they can get hold of you to talk about it.
Sure.
Thanks so much.
Okay, motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On whose side?
Aye.
Aye, so carry. Thank you, Dan.
All right, the next item I have for you is vote to approve an award bid for electric convection oven to Samtel &amp; Sun Incorporated to the amount of $23,249.07. They were the lowest compliant bidder.
Okay, a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On whose side? Aye. And this is for the PRC, right?
Uh, prison.
Oh, the prison, okay.
And the last item I have for you is vote to reject all bids received for the Williamsport Region Relief Well Rehabilitation and Replacement Project. So we received additional feedback from the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And as a result of that feedback, we're taking a different direction on how we proceed with the bid process, so.
Okay, we have Shannon here today. Shannon, do you want to explain this, please?
Sure.
I can explain.
I'd rather you do it.
Do you reach your level?
I have.
Okay, um, as you know, there are a lot of different projects going on with the levee system right now. One of the projects involved a process where the city hired the Army Corps and their specific engineers and hydrologists to come in and analyze the, the northeast and northwest levees, which we associate as Memorial Avenue and Dewey Avenue areas. And while they were up here doing that risk analysis, they toured the entire site. They looked at all of the background permits and requirements that had, and all of the engineering that had been done when the levee put in to get to the understanding of where the levee needs to go in the future in those areas. And while doing that with the relief wells, as part of the system-wide improvement framework, which is what keeps both the South Williamsport and Williamsport levees recertified, while we work with those individuals on getting the fixes done that are needed or improvements done that are needed, they asked us about the relief wells, and our engineer was up here for the whole thing. And she explained that under the SWEF, which is what we call that recertification And she explained that under the SWF, which is what we call that recertification and system-wide improvement process framework, we explained that, you know, we had been instructed by the Army Corps that we had to replace or rehab in kind the 60 relief wells that don't be.
How many relief wells?
Sixty.
Sixty.
Between Williamsport and South Williamsport. And their design was done back in the 40s, they were put in place in the 40s and 50s, a few newer ones in South Williamsport, but basically, it's an old design and which has caused a lot of issues with our bidding process. Because, you know, we only have so much information, and people are very wary of drilling in and around the levy when they don't have all of the information to them. So the bids have been quite high. And we've been telling the Army Corps this, but unfortunately, nobody had ever come to see it. And, but because the city had hired them to do the risk analysis, they were here, they looked at those wells, and they agreed with what our engineer has been telling them for a long time, that it would be a better idea and more cost-effective if what would occur would be that we have all the information we need, we just have to do a final design and analysis for the seepage areas, the areas that get water, the areas that are, because a relief well is relieving pressure on the levy. So the areas that are in these higher critical areas, not the entire levy system, because their idea back then was, the initial design was like every 30 yards, there's a well of the same size and everything. They designed the sections, but then they didn't design to the specific site. And the Army Corps now understands and agrees that it would be more cost-effective to replace only the wells in critical seepage areas and design them to current engineering standards. So they actually operate properly. They conceded that they feel that there are certain wells out there that will probably never see water because they weren't, the design, while fine, they didn't do the final step and make sure that where they were putting it was appropriate or, you know, they put them there, the design was every 30 yards. When the contractor came in here, he put a well every 10 yards, and they're not cost-effective to replace, so, which is why we're having problems. So new, the new well drilling standards, the new analysis and final design will give us what we need to only have to replace the wells in areas where they are critical.
So less wells.
Less wells, designed specifically for the area they're needed in, and even potentially, you know, when PennDOT came in and put in, in the 220 highway and the Route 15 interchange north, they disturbed some of those areas, and some of those wells can't be replaced anymore.
So here's the question. Less wells at 2023 standards compared to 60 wells at 1950 standards?
And in the appropriate spots.
This is really good news for the community, because it means that we're going to have to spend hopefully less money. And I do give credit to the Army Corps and to FEMA. They came down together. We give credit to all the elected officials who went out, the mayor, congressman, at that time, it was Keller.
Yeah.
The three commissioners, the, we had the planning department, we had the city engineers, we had a whole bunch of people over at Penn College, actually, a couple of years ago. And they went back, we raised issues at that meeting, particularly, we raised issues because we had FEMA, one federal agency, saying you need to do this, and Army Corps, another federal agency, saying you need to do that. And what we said to them is, we need you to talk to each other and tell us what you want us to do. And they listened to us. And not only did they listen to us, but as a result of that, they went back and listened to the recommendation of our engineer, that it made no sense to engineer this to 1950 technology when we have 2023, right? So that's great news.
And the fact that we don't have all of the information, I mean, they went back through and they got us, our engineer researched as much as she could, and she reached out to as many people at Army Corps as she could, because the Army Corps is the one that built the levy system, then turned it over to the local sponsors, which are Williamsport and South Williamsport. And, but the problem is, is, you know, that was a long, long, long time ago. And some of that, some of those documents are not around, we can't find them. And it's really hard to get a bid on something that you don't know exactly what's there.
And that meeting took place in November 2021.
Was it?
Yeah, when the car came up here.
Yeah. And, I mean, unfortunately, there was, I mean, we had an 18-month time delay due to some things that were out of our control, the Army Corps had to designate people, and the people they designated got sick, and there was delays in that process. So unfortunately, you know, when we hoped to break down, break ground last year, it's maybe a good thing that we didn't with the relief wells, because of the fact that now that we've gotten them to be here and see, we just wish they, we could have done this last year.
Right, but it would have been an unnecessary cost to do 60 wells.
At 11 million.
At 1950 standards, you don't build a house today.
Right.
At 1950 standards.
Right, right.
You know?
And, I mean, back then, you know, they didn't have as much technology as they have now. Some of the wells, you know, they designed in sections, but we all know that as soon as you, what we look at on the surface is not what's underground, and what might be here is not what's over there. So some of the geology is not conducive, some of the wells may never see water because they're not in the correct geology. So, but back then, they overdesigned and put one every 10 yards instead of every 30, and now, and that's what we were having to replace. So.
And I agree with my colleagues, I just hope that in the future, you know, we did put a bid out. It was accepted, it was $11 million. And it seemed like the process was wrong, right? I mean, thank God this happened, or we would have had a contract for $11 million and didn't do anything.
Well, and I think.
And so we need agencies, well, not just the overkill, okay, it's not effective either.
True.
And it's taxpayers' money.
Yep.
And so we need agencies to collaborate with us, and especially when you're talking about design and engineering and not revert back to 1950 technology. And we were this close to starting the project because the commissioners were given pressure to say, hey, we're spending all this money in design and engineering, and we don't see anything being done.
Right.
Right? And then at the very last minute, you know, things changed, thank God they changed. But nonetheless, we hope there's more cooperation and a better understanding of the process and when we should put things out for bid.
So I think it also is an important lesson for boards of commissioners and other elected officials, right? That when, when sometimes you're brought stuff from an agency or other places and you instinctively feel like, well, wait, no, this can't be right, especially when we, when we had looked and it had gone from like 3 million to 8 million to 11 million, and we're kind of thinking, there's something wrong with this picture. And, but that's what the democratic process does, right? It's not just a, somebody coming in saying, right, they engage with elected officials. And so part of that is important too. I mean, that was, you know, us saying, hey, this can't be right, we're not going to do this, we can't.
But it's also, you know, here again, we're all in business, and it takes time, especially in something this technical, that you're spending money as a private business to put in a bid.
Yeah.
And I'll guarantee you, it's thousands and thousands of dollars this company.
Yeah, the poor gentleman, he flew in from Michigan, I think it was.
Yeah.
And deeded that twice, so.
And here we go, we let him down.
Well, he can put another bid in.
One of the benefits, one of the benefits, though, with this process is that now, I mean, the city was, you know, through our, through, through working with the county, through working with our joint consultant, Keller Partners out of DC, the city was proactive in going after the SQRA, the system-wide, the semi-qualitative risk analysis. And, and by doing that, because they had to spend money, because your Army Corps doesn't do it for free, they do it for 50%. So they had to spend money to do this, but by doing that, that brought both the Army Corps and FEMA in the same room together, talking to each other. And just like this morning, we, Matt and I had a call with FEMA and FEMA on our earmark funds, which were helping the city and everybody try to work through that process for the award. But now that everybody is at the table, everybody understands what we need to do, we're all kind of working together to try to make sure that things happen. And.
Was it an extension of the ESDA grant award? Or was that the?
The EDA, EDA. We have to break ground on the crosspipes by November.
This November?
This November. And I'm, Maya and I are working on the crosspipe oversight bid and the construction bid as we speak. So we're working with that. So we have to break ground on the crosspipes by November, so we should have those bids out hopefully in August. Yeah, so we're working with EDA on that right now. And, but this has gotten us all together on the same page, so they understand where we're at. We're trying to make sure that, they're calling us, like, unfortunately, the city's engineer went to a different job, so they're calling us and they're calling the city, hey, we still need some information for the earmark. So Matt and I were on the call this morning, we had Gaz, our engineer, who works for both us and the city, on the call, so she can provide them what they need while the city's in the process of hiring an engineer, so that we're not losing anything. So we're staying on top of that portion, so that we can make sure, and they're calling us if they don't have what they need.
And that's a substantial grant.
Yes, that's $8 million.
How many?
Eight million.
That's the one from Congressman Keller.
Yes, yeah. So we're just trying to make sure, you know, with, now with this new information we have from SQRA, it's targeting things better, so that we can make sure we're putting in what we need to do.
Yeah.
Commissioners, I think it's important to note that when we first started the whole process with the levy, and then we, you know, we kind of moved along, we got involved in the SWF plan to maintain accreditation, which protected flood insurance rates and those things, the SQRA didn't exist. And so we had that 18-month kind of backlog with Army Corps when we started the SQRA. But honestly, yeah, we had a setback timewise, but I don't think we've ever had a better collaboration between agencies and stakeholders.
And it was very beneficial, because our engineer, since we had started on the Memorial Avenue design work, and she was doing a lot of background analysis, she reached out to the Army Corps and FEMA saying, hey, I have an issue. And she presented that issue to us at our meeting that we had over at Trade and Transit when we were pushing for the SQRA. And she said, I can't go any further, I've done a lot of background work, I've done a lot of modeling, and what I'm proposing can't be done without an act of Congress. So we need the Army Corps and FEMA to be involved in this. And she provided all of her information to the Army Corps during the SQRA, so they didn't have to recreate the wheel, they took what she had and then did their analysis and got their geologists and hydrogeologists in the same room. They were sitting over at Trade and Transit, they were all sitting around, it was like a, I don't know, Geek Week? They all had their computers, they were all running numbers, they were all talking in language that I can sort of understand.
I'll go back, I'll go back to the meeting that we had as county commissioners, because this wasn't a county issue. Can you imagine if we didn't say, let's step up and get involved in this? But those four entities, those four communities, I don't think this project ever gets done because of the resources that we give to the project and maybe, you know.
No, that's a really good point. I mean, I mean, you're talking about Old Lycum, Loyola Sock, South Williamsport, and the city. And, you know, we give them Matt, we give them Shannon, we give them the planning department, and that's what we should do. And you make a really good point. And more projects like that, the county needs to, we don't have skin in the game. It's like the bridge bundling, we don't own any of the bridges, but we're doing it. I think it's fair to say that both agencies, FEMA and Army Corps, have been very responsive to us. And I, I think the public should know that, because oftentimes, we hear about federal agencies and the bureaucracy and so forth, but between our elected officials on both sides, Republican and Democratic side, in the House and in the Senate, as well as our own staff, working, they've been very responsive to us. I think they are using this almost as a pilot or a prototype going forward with all the levies around the state and around the country that need, that were built in the 40s and the 50s, that need to be repaired. And I think they're learning, it's a learning process on both sides. For them and for us, the most efficient, effective way to do it. And I think then they're going to move out on some of these other levies and.
Well, it's not only that, but this area, this is probably one of the few collaborators where you're at all levels of government that are collaborating. And the fact that this is protecting over a billion dollars of our tax base, but that's just the tax base, that doesn't include the infrastructure.
Four.
Four billion, okay. But that doesn't include the infrastructure, that doesn't include the roads, the water, the sewer lines.
Right.
The bridges, the things like that. So, I mean, we're talking a lot of money and access to, you know, if something happens at the river, you're not going to get from South Williamsport to the hospital. You're not, there's, you know, things like that.
And, you know, if you look in the paper, just this flash flooding in Philadelphia, outside Philly, where the families from South Carolina, that was a flash flood in a small, if this levy goes in a small place, it's going to do catastrophic damage. And by the way, you made a good point, at all levels of government, including Senator Yaw's tremendous help that he's given us on the R-CAPS. And Governor Wolf on getting R-CAPS back to the community so that, money so that we can do what we need to do. We need to, we need to thank them. And just say that at some point, the people in the community, we're going to have to come to them and say, listen, it may, it may not be this board, but it may be the next board, is going to say, we need a way to look at what happened in this last week in other communities and recognize that, as you said, if the water and sewer lines are ripped out from water gushing, right? Think about all the money we're spending now replacing water and sewer lines through ARPA. And it's like, small. And if we had, if we had a breach in that river and it wiped out major portions. So I hope the public, when, when the elected officials come to them, whether it's this board or the next board, and says, listen, we need everybody to put up a little bit of funds to make sure that we maintain the levy. I hope they'll recognize that it's the future of the community.
Right, and I do want to recognize, since John Sanders was at the city for, I mean, just the brief time period he was there, he got a lot of projects moving forward. I mean, they have a bit, you know, we're going to be bidding out the crosspipes, part of the EDA, but he's also bidding out crosspipes information currently right now, they're getting ready to do that once they get approval for the earmark funds. You know, they're looking at, they have a cost estimate for electrical and generators for three of the pump stations, they're, they have designed for the new roofs on all the pump stations, they're looking at the additional electrical and designs for pump stations right now. I mean, there's a lot of things that are happening right now. It's, I know people can't see that shovel in the dirt, but there are a lot of things that have to be done before that shovel gets there. And like Commissioner Mousary just said, you know, it's kind of good we didn't have that shovel in the dirt or that drilling well out there, because now we can do what we've always wanted to do and replace what needs replaced at the current engineering standard.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up, it's important to explain to the public, so they have an idea how complicated the process is. And it's good to see that we're operating on today's standards and not 1950 now.
Yes.
Not yet. A motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
On their side?
Aye.
Aye.
69 and 610, Jason, oh, hold on.
Yeah, you're right, yep.
69, 610, Jason.
Morning, Jason.
Morning, Commissioner. Morning, Director.
Morning.
Commissioner 6.9, this is approve a change order, number one, with EnviroCon Systems in the amount of $19,000. EnviroCon Systems was the company that the Board of Commissioners awarded the replacement liner in the Leech Lake tank. That was awarded late last fall with the idea that we would get it completed before Mother Nature closed in on us with cold weather. Unfortunately, it didn't happen, we were not able to complete the project, and such that in the bidding, we did not put an earmark in for demobilization and mobilization. So the fee you see of $19,000 is the cost of the demobilization and mobilization for EnviroCon, which they have completed the liner system and are now out of the site.
Okay, a motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
Any questions or comments? On their side? Aye, so carry. Thank you, Jason.
Commissioner 6.10 is approve agreement with monitoring, control, and compliance, or MCC. This is a firm that I want to bring in to do our gas work, our well rebuilds and our pumps, and cover the work for what we're normally doing with our gas crew.
Okay, a motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
On their side?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Touch on the line?
Touch is unable to be on the line, Commissioner. He's been interviewed and this is Steph, good morning, he's asked me to cover this for him.
Good morning.
Good morning. This is a contract with Eagle Towing and Recovery. The county is required to have a hazardous materials emergency response agreement with a cleanup company, environmental service, whom we have had in the past, they have dropped their FEMA certification. The next closest contract after us is Eagle Towing out of Belmont Milesburg area. So this is a contract, this is only being the event, a cause to the county, an event that they cannot locate the person to, the cleanup is caused by accidents, things like that, they, it's the responsibility of the insurance company. So this is a mandatory thing, and any of these covered by tariff fees for the hazard event.
Okay, so 2023 budget, I'm also.
This is the 2023 budget.
Okay, a motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
On their side?
Aye.
So carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 6.12, Malik.
Morning, Malik.
Good morning. Seeking your approval for amendment extension for Cummings Township through the Act 13 Mini Grant Program. They just had more playground equipment delivered, and they're just going to finish installing the playground. The extension is until December 31st, 2023.
Okay, great. It's nice to see you. Okay, great. It's nice to see another playground for kids in the community.
Absolutely.
Yeah. It's Act 13 funds, so. A motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
All very excited? Thank you.
Six thirteen, Kelsey.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
So today I have a change order for utility elevation program. This is just a timeline extension that extends the contract with Elijah LLC through the end of this month.
Okay. A motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
All very excited? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So curious. Thank you, Kelsey.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
And I know Malik left, but Malik and Kelsey, we appreciate the job you guys have done.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
You get us the information, that's for sure.
It would. Thanks. Yeah.
And the results.
Yep.
And the result.
Six fourteen and fifteen, Leslie.
Morning, Leslie.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Matt.
Morning.
The six point fourteen, we're asking your approval for signatures on our Microsoft volume licenses. Basically, this is a signature only, and this will allow Microsoft to give us our next three-year true-up cost.
Okay. Is it also 2023 budget item?
Yeah, for this one, it's just a signature, and then the license is actually in the budget, but we didn't get those quotes yet.
Got you. Motion? I'll move to approve.
A second.
All very excited? Aye.
Aye.
So curious.
The six point fifteen, this is, we're asking your approval to approve our data license bundle quotation from Malillo. This will actually give us license for our new infrastructure for Department of Public Safety as well as downtown campuses here. It is a total of twenty-two thousand, six hundred and four dollars, and it is in the budget.
Okay. Motion?
I'll move to approve.
A second.
All very excited? Aye. Nice. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, for your help on this.
All right. Next up, Commissioner Comment.
Well, I will respond to some questions we've had about cats. So we all love pets. We all love cats. We all love dogs and any other pets. The problem is that we are also a public facility that is a place of employment. And while it would be great if everyone could just come to work however they wanted to, whether it means that people who want to come in pajamas can come in pajamas, or if people want to come and bring their pets, they could bring their pets, there is a problem with people who have allergies. And the pets were, or the cats were at the landfill, and an issue developed because we had an employee with such a severe allergy to the cats that the employee couldn't go into the facility. They couldn't do the job that the taxpayers were paying them to do because of the presence of the cats. And so we actually had made it determined several months ago to, that the cats, you know, we couldn't not have the employee work because of the cats. And so we said that the cats are going to have to go. Unfortunately, somehow the message wasn't communicated, and now, more recently, it's been communicated. There was no ultimatum that they had to be out in seventy-two hours, although I believe that there was at a certain point some deadline that had to be put on them. And it might have been directed to be seventy-two hours. I don't know. What is that, four days? So it isn't some big bad commissioners who are trying to be mean to cats. It's really about being able to have a public space where anybody can come, including employees who, by the way, the taxpayers are paying, to do a job, to make sure that they can have access to the space. I hope the public will recognize that it's not a reflection on anybody not appreciating cats or anything like that, and that we take seriously. But we also, when someone, it would be equivalent to us saying, listen, we're serving a luncheon and we're serving peanuts, whether or not, you know, you have an allergy to peanuts, too bad, it's on the salad and we expect you to eat it. We cannot direct an employee to go into a place to work if the employee is going to basically not be able to breathe. And that's the situation that's developed. So I hope the public will understand that and will understand that, you know, sometimes we have to make decisions that aren't always pleasing. And Commissioner Mousair made a very good example. This is the employee who already works here. But he made a good example in a conversation with me today, and he said, we hire someone, they give two weeks' notice at another job. They've cut their ties with the other job, and they come to work and they find out that, oh my God, there're cats in the office. They just quit a job and took another job and are working under, they can't work under those conditions because they can't breathe. So I thought it was very insightful when he said that to me this morning. But it is, it is, it is something that, you know, has to be done. I mean, it's, and I read one post, I don't really follow social media, but someone had sent it to me. And I know people are concerned. We've had about forty emails, right? And so I understand that. I read one post where it said something to the effect of, is it connected to raises, our request for raises? And that's just not even logical, right? I mean, we don't, first of all, we've done everything we can to try to, in fact, today, we heard bids on another compensation study. So we've done everything we can to try to make sure that we have compensation policies that are fair and that are conducive to people staying with the county and to hiring. So it has, it really has, it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with people's ability to, to work in an environment and recognizing, you know, there's an old saying, my rights end where your rights begin. My right to bring a cat to work ends if you don't have the ability to breathe because of that cat. I have to, you know, recognize that. That's part of give and take in a society. So anyway, that's, that's the cat situation.
We appreciate the staff at the landfill. They work very hard. They're a very close committed, kind of, community over there. The workers are family. Often, cats are abandoned, like many animals are, many pets sadly, by people today, which is a tragedy alone. Because we love our pets. Often at the landfill, Jason, you can attest to this, they're stuck in boxes and thrown in the trash, which is so sad.
We find kittens all the time, sir.
Yeah, and that's, that's sad. It's wrong. And so I guess five years ago, you adopted some kittens.
Yes, we did.
And there's three of them over there now that have become part of the family. And we can understand why the employees get upset. No one wants to lose their pets, but it's an health issue. Our concern now is to make sure these kittens are found, or these cats are found homes.
Yes.
In good homes. We're not going to put a timeline on, you know, they're going to be thrown out in the heat or bad weather. We want to make sure they get good homes. So if anyone wants to adopt one of them, please contact Jason.
Thank you.
And find good homes for them and move on.
Yeah, that's a good point. These were not cats that were outside. You know, one of the posts said, you know, with a landfill, there must be rats and stuff all over. These weren't, these were cats that were in the office. They had litter boxes. They had climbing apparatus inside the office. And that's, that's the difference. But yeah, obviously. But can they call the landfill if they have, would like to adopt the cat?
Yep.
Okay. That's great.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments?
Just, if anyone, I just want to make one last comment on this cat. Two weeks ago, my wife was bit by a stray cat, not a stray cat, a cat that a tenant had abandoned. And so we had a choice, we didn't know where the cat had rabies. So my wife underwent the rabies shots as opposed to putting the cat to sleep, because that's the only way you can determine whether there's rabies, right? So it isn't a question of being insensitive about the pets, right? It's a question of being, being fair to our employees.
Any other Commissioner comments?
No.
Pretty sure.
Yeah. Well.
I didn't ask that.
No, I didn't volunteer to speak on the cat this morning, but I felt like we need to. I mean, there's forty emails upstairs and people are.
People are upset.
People are upset.
Okay. Public comment? Yes. Good morning. Thank you for being here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and Manager. I wanted to take a moment to introduce myself. I'm Amy Resch. I'm the Assistant Administrator for the Lycoming County Library System and Executive Director for the James V. Brown Library. And I wanted to begin today by thanking the county and the Commissioners for the continued support of library service in our county and give you a small update. So at this point in the year, we were looking at all of our numbers and our data from January through June 30th of this year versus the same time period last year. And every single metric is higher than last year, so we're very excited about that. Our library visits are booming. Our patrons are coming in regularly. They're very excited and happy with our services, our programs. And at this point in the year, we have saved Lycoming County taxpayers almost six million dollars by coming to the library of one of the six members and taking out materials or attending programs or using our Wi-Fi or checking out hotspots. So we're really excited about that, and we know that the numbers are going to continue to grow. So I just wanted to thank you all for your support of library service and give you a small handout if that's okay. And let you know if you have any questions, you can of course call or email me.
So Amy comes to us from Berks County, where we had another, which is where Shannon Rossman also worked. Amy, tell us a little bit about your background and your credentials.
Oh, sure.
You have several degrees which probably are going to be extremely helpful in terms of the financial aspects. Tell us about your background.
Sure. So prior to this, as the Commissioner mentioned, I was the Assistant Administrator for Berks County Public Library System. And that's a Department of County Government. So I worked for the Chief Operations Officer and the County Commissioners. And we had nineteen libraries and four branches in Berks. And my background in libraries previous to that, I was a library director to small and mid-sized libraries. And I have a Master's in Business Administration from Auburnia University and a Master's in Library and Information Science from Drexel University. So I've been a professional librarian in the Commonwealth for over ten years.
Thought you just graduated.
Okay. Well, I have a good skincare routine. Thank you.
Well, we look forward to, to working with you and with the folks in all the libraries. And we thank, one of our, back in the back is Larry Stout, who you know.
Yes, on the board.
Yep, on the board and a Stalwart volunteer with the library system for a long time and with Montgomery Library.
We're just really grateful to have the Commissioners' support. We know how impactful the work that we do every day is. As you know, we have a lot of people that are experiencing homelessness or different challenges in their life, and the library is a constant. And we're really grateful that we have these services. And of course, without your support, we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So we just wanted to let you know that.
Thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I give these to you?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Uh, one online. Oh, come on. Sorry.
What's that?
Oh, Tom.
Yes.
Psalm forty-nine seventeen, and then twenty says, "For when he dies, he will carry nothing away; his glory will not descend after him. Man in his pomp, yet without understanding, is as the beast that perish." And of course, that's talking about our lives and if we live in favor of God or if we live without God. Daniel Webster, in eighteen fifty-two, this is one of his quotes, "If we in our posterity shall be true to the Christian religion, if we in they shall live always in the fear of God and shall respect his commandments, if we in they shall maintain just moral sentiments and such conscious convictions of duty as shall control the heart and life, we may have the highest hopes of the future fortunes of our country. And if we maintain those institutions of government and political union, exceeding all praise as much as it exceeds all former examples of political associations, we may be sure of one thing, that while our country furnishes material for a thousand masters of the historic art, it will afford no topic for a given. It will have no decline and fall. It will go on prospering and to prosper. But if we in our posterity reject religious institutions and authority, violate the rules of eternal justice, trifle with the injunctions of morality, and recklessly destroy the political constitution which holds us together, no man can tell how sudden a catastrophe may overwhelm us that shall bury our glory in profound obscurity." Of course, that's a warning and a prophecy. And when people, you know, stay in tune with the Word, you know, they'll see things that, you know, to educate us, to keep us safe in our, in our community with each other. So, of course, I'm part of a group that likes to educate people, and sometimes you get pulled into some things that sometimes you don't want to be at odds with each other. I mean, you want to try to work with each other, like with the levee. I mean, that's a great thing. They're able to finally get FEMA in and, and Army Corps and work with the engineers. And that's, that's a great thing. And sometimes we are in a hurry to try to fix things, just like in that, maybe in that instance. Of course, I guess they weren't in a hurry for a long time until they realized that something better get done. People get anxious, and sometimes things can be said or taken wrongly, or sometimes just said wrongly, and people are without thinking. And the last thing I want to do is beat each other, anyone's throats and be a part of any false accusations. So in that, in that, keeping that in mind, if there's ever a question, you know, maybe, maybe you think maybe I've said something or some part of something, and just say, I don't mind being confronted with, with issues from people, since I am running for school board too. And it's important that I, one, people understand, I may have standards and thoughts, but I'm not closed-minded, you know? And I think that's what we need in our, in our county and everywhere.
Thank you.
But I was at the fair last night. They had these book lists that are great for everyone to pray for their house or maybe would give to a relative that's outside the area.
The fair runs through Saturday.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
Online.
Online? Yes.
All right. I have three from Jeff Willtry. "The only thing you absolutely have to know is the location of the library, Albert Onson." Jeff Willtry. "Cutting libraries during a recession is like cutting hospitals during a plague." Eleanor Hume. And lastly, thank you Commissioners for all continued support of our local libraries. It is equivalent to support for our communities.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone. And we've completed our agenda, so we'll be adjourned. Next meeting will be July 27th at 10:00 a.m. right here in this room. Thank you. Have a good day.